Good morning. Good morning, everyone, to those in Studio 919 here in Austin and online for today's event titled Public Education Beyond the Special Session. My name is Matt Ewald. I serve the Texas Tribune as Director of Events and Live Journalism. During the 2023 regular legislative session, lawmakers passed bills that require armed security officers at every school, provide mental health training for certain district employees, and give some extra money for retired teachers. However, teacher pay raises and additional school funding fell by the wayside amid a stalemate over school vouchers, which would give parents access to state funding to pay for their children's private schooling. As the Texas Tribune reported, the governor announced yesterday he had reached an agreement with Speaker Dade Phelan and House leaders on school vouchers, a potential breakthrough after months of unsuccessful negotiations days before the end of this third special legislative session. But Phelan stopped short of calling it a done deal. As attention stays on school vouchers, education advocates say other areas require lawmakers' attention. Now, we'll spend a few minutes talking about the state of the status of this potential deal, but today's conversation is about what is not included in this special session. We'll discuss teacher recruitment and retention, funding formulas, and improving student performance, what the lack of attention and action on these issues mean for Texas educators, school administrators, and families, and, most importantly, how we can address these pressing challenges to public education going forward. Our moderator for this event is Texas Tribune Public Education reporter Brian Lopez, and our panel includes Michelle Reinhardt, Superintendent of Alpine Independent School District, Josh Sanderson, Deputy Executive Director of the Equity Center, and Bridget Worley, Chief State Impact Officer of the Commit Partnership. Before we begin today's program, I'd like to acknowledge today's sponsors. Our major sponsors are the Texas Association of School Business Officials, philanthropy advocates, the Texas Association of School Administrators, and Raise Your Hand Texas. Though corporate sponsors and donors underwrite this event, they play no role in determining the content, speakers, or line of questioning. We thank those Texas Tribune members who are joining us in person and online today. Our journalism, including our extensive journalism covering education throughout the state, thrives thanks to the support of our members. Texans deserve the truth, and we're dedicated to delivering it. If you're not a member yet, please consider a contribution, no matter the amount, to empower our mission. You can show your support by going to texastribune.org/donate and donating today. Today's program runs one hour with approximately 45 minutes for our panel discussion and 15 minutes for your questions. We'll welcome questions from our audience here in Studio 919, and we'll ask questions on behalf of those joining us online. Please visit our Q&amp;A portal at texastribune.org/ask to submit your questions and let us know where you're joining us from. Before we begin today's program, let me briefly introduce our panel. Our moderator, Brian Lopez, is Public Education Reporter for the Texas Tribune. He joined the Tribune in August 2021 after covering local government at the Fort Worth Star Telegram. And our panelists. Michelle Reinhardt is Superintendent of Alpine Independent School District in West Texas, a school district with 1,000 students and 200 employees. Prior to joining Alpine, Reinhardt served as an Assistant Superintendent, Regional Educational Consultant, and Classroom Teacher in West Texas School Districts and Service Centers. She has also consulted with school districts across the United States on issues related to school finance, strategic planning, advocacy, community engagement, and curriculum and instruction. Josh Sanderson, Deputy Executive Director of the Equity Center, has over 20 years of experience working with policymakers at the state, local, and federal levels, in addition to working on various local and statewide campaigns and advocacy projects. For the past eight years at the Equity Center, he has worked on numerous school finance policy proposals directed at providing adequate and equitable funding for all Texas school children. And Bridget Worley is the Chief State Impact Officer for the Commit Partnership. Prior to her current role, she founded and served as Executive Director of the Texas Impact Network, a joint venture of Educate Texas and the Commit Partnership focused on building capacity across school systems statewide to drive student achievement through successful implementation of research-proven initiatives funded by House Bill Three, the 2019 Texas School Finance Bill. I thank our panel for joining us this morning for a conversation that seeks to better understand the challenges and considers how we move forward. And with that, I welcome the panel to the stage.
Thank you for being here and joining us, and thank you again to the panelists for making the time to talk about public education and, as titled, "Beyond the Special Session." Before we get to that, we will talk about a little bit of news that happened yesterday with Governor Greg Abbott announcing that there had been a deal made on education savings account this session and that he would be expanding the call, the agenda, to include things like public school finance and accountability. First, I just want to say, while the governor has called it a deal, House leadership has yet to say that there is a deal and that we'll move forward with something by the end of this special session in the next week. So the first question for you guys is, what is a potential deal stopping, or what can we move forward with if there's a deal reached? Does it make sense to reach a deal if it means that education savings account or school vouchers will be the norm in Texas?
I can start on that one. I think there's no need for a deal. It's been Alpine ISD's position throughout that the governor is holding public education funding hostage for five and a half million public school children in the state of Texas, and also our teachers' livelihood hostage in order to prioritize and move forward a pet project. And so, in our mind, there's no need for these two topics to be tied together, specifically vouchers and public education funding. We know the need, it's well documented, to increase public education funding and fully fund every Texas public school, and that's what the call needs to be about. And then, if there was enough support for a voucher bill specifically, it would have already passed, or wouldn't need to have to be tied to public ed funding in order to move it through.
Yeah, I think that Michelle hit the nail on the head. Our position this entire time, our members' position, has been that this is a false choice, that if there was public support, legislative support, for an ESA or a voucher-type program, that it should stand on its own merits and be voted on based on the proposals within that voucher ESA proposal. But that school finance and funding, the issues that we know are problems, teacher shortages, inflation eroding, the buying power of the basic allotment that's now been stagnant for four years, that has brought public and legislative support. We want the legislature, the governor, to allow these two issues to be addressed separately on their own merits rather than leveraging support for public schools to pass what we believe is an unpopular ESA proposal.
I will just add, first of all, thank you for the question, because it's hard to go beyond the special session when we are currently in the middle of a special session. So, wondering how we were going to navigate that. I think, on top of what my two fellow panelists have said, it's important to just consider the scale of the two sides of this current argument. If you think about the House proposal and the Senate proposal around ESAs, max, we are looking at less than 1% of the public school students in Texas, and that conversation is holding up a lot of needed policy and needed funding for the other 99% of students. So, I am, Commit is pro-public education, Bridget Worley is pro-public education, and I am hopeful that a deal can be reached, that we can get back to focusing on the students that are in our public schools.
So, speaking of some of the things that we're talking about, what does the state of public education right now in Texas? A lot of the focus hasn't been on that, right, over the last year in terms of, there has been proposals, right? Bill's been talked about, but at the end of the day, this has been that thing that's stuck right now from the wheels from progressing. But let's talk a little bit about some of those issues. Let's talk about teachers. Teachers all over the state, whether it's urban, suburban, or rural. What is the state of the profession with, a lot of teachers wanting raises, preparation being a big issue that superintendents are talking about in terms of certified, uncertified teachers? So, what are some of those solutions that look like, if we can get that, this education savings account thing done, or some of the things that we can look at to the teacher profession, say, this is how we can improve this and make our teachers better?
So, I know we have to truncate our bios at the beginning, but I do just want to call out that I was a classroom teacher. I taught second and third grade, and it is still the hardest and most rewarding job I have ever had. So, I do bring that a little bit to this conversation. I think, and one, I could talk about this all day. So, I'm going to try to give a brief answer as I can. I do talk about this all day, because it matters so much. I think there's three areas where we really need to focus when we're talking about retaining and recruiting teachers. One is the experience that happens before the classroom. It is a very harsh transition to go from being a student in a classroom to being in front of the classroom. And one way we can solve for that is a residency or apprentice experience, where teachers are able to have kind of that middle ground, where they are stepping into the role of a teacher, but they are doing it under the support and under the mentorship of a great veteran teacher who's there to jump in to give them feedback. It's great for teachers, and it's great for students. The second is to arm our teachers with the best tools possible to do their teaching. And that is related to having high-quality instructional materials accessible for every teacher. We know in the Teacher Vacancy Task Force, it mentioned that teachers are spending seven to 12 hours creating materials, searching for materials. I definitely did that, and I would love to get to a point where teachers are given materials and they can spend their time instead on building culture in their classroom, differentiating for the different students that they have on their roster, and also just the joy of teaching. No one got into teaching to stay up on Google at night looking for lessons, and they don't need to if we're able to provide them with those materials. And then, the third is money. We should be doing everything we can to identify our highest-quality educators and reward them for the work that they are doing. We are able to do that now, thankfully, through the teacher incentive allotment, which I know is continuing to grow across the state, and I am optimistic that the legislature will continue to see that as a valuable program and expand it, both in the number of teachers that are eligible and the amount of money that we're giving to those teachers.
Happy to talk about what this looks like in Alpine ISD. So, starting teachers in Alpine ISD earn $33,000 a year, and that is just absolutely unacceptable. And so, what causes that, right? What keeps us at that underfunded salary level? And for us, it is persistent and chronic underfunding of our public school district. We are the 15th lowest-funded district in the entire state of Texas, in the bottom one and a half percentile. We only receive 85% of our state-determined allotment, which means that the state sets how much funding that we should receive, and we don't receive 15% of that every single year. And so, that's how you end up with teachers earning a state minimum salary that is entirely too low. So, when people talk about the average teacher salary in Texas being $60,000 a year, that number isn't even on our teacher's salary schedule for a teacher with 25 years of experience, right? So, again, what we're trying to bring to bear is there are literally hundreds of districts across Texas that are outliers, if you will, to these averages, that aren't represented in these averages, where we can't pay a living wage to our teachers. Additionally, if we look at some of our other support positions, paraprofessionals in Alpine ISD and hundreds of other districts like us start at $20,000 a year, which is below the poverty level if they have children. And so, this is a public education funding issue. The Texas Teacher Vacancy Task Force came out with a number of actionable recommendations across three buckets. The latter two buckets about support and training, we're able to actualize a lot of those in district. But number one is compensation, and we can't actualize that without legislative action on behalf of public schools to address the nuances that keep districts like Alpine ISD deliberately underfunded.
You know, this is one of the things I think that's the most frustrating about all this conversation, is because I think that on this issue, there's very little disagreement about all aspects of it. You know, we know that the one component that we have some control over that's the most important aspect of a child's educational success is having a quality educator in their classroom. And two, that we are having a crisis statewide of educator recruitment and retention. And to the governor's credit, like Bridget mentioned, he created the Teacher Vacancy Task Force that studied this and made a series of sound policy recommendations, increasing, dramatically increasing compensation, providing more training and support systems for educators. Those are things the legislature can act on, could have acted on during the 140-day regular session. We have those answers in front of us. We have the resources to address it, and there's little pushback, but it's being held up because of the politics associated with addressing that being tied to an education savings account. So, knowing where the problems lie, and knowing what the solutions are, and not being able to reach out and make that change, make that adjustment, that's, I think, one of the primary frustrations of the education community.
And talking about teacher preparation, certification, I don't have the number right on the top of my head, but there's a substantial amount of teachers out there that are in a classroom, they go into it with an intern certificate, and I remember a slide from in the spring at the State Board of Education meeting with Commissioner Mike Marassa saying, you know, a lot of these teachers, these like one-to-five-year teachers are teaching in your most vulnerable classrooms. What is Texas doing with that certification process, and is that something that needs to be handled at the lawmaker level in terms of, have you seen any proposals that you could say, you know, this could help us with how we certify our teachers? Or should it be something that, with these alternative certification models, that something needs to be done there?
There's a lot of ways to answer this question, so I'll pick my way, and then we'll move down the line. One around, I think, resident, this idea of residency, well, one, I should say, we have to have different entryways to the teaching profession. To keep up with the number of teachers we have, and in the current situation we have, every teacher cannot come from a four-year university. That's just not feasible. And so, I am glad that we have different avenues. The residency model, though, also provides a pathway to a teaching profession for someone who can't spend a year being broke because they're going to go to college, or, sorry, go to a prep program where they're not earning any revenue. So, it's an ability to get that training while you are also working in a school system and providing the support that school systems desperately need. So, I think continuing to have those different pathways is important, and continuing to find a way that we can financially support people who want to be teachers while they're getting that training.
Yeah, happy to talk about what this looks like in Alpine and many districts like us. So, I think I'm remembering the slide you were talking about, Brian, and one of the things that was highlighted in that slide was that, a few years ago, the number of completely non-certified teachers was in single digits across Texas. In the last few years, it's jumped to something like 28%, 29% of teachers in classrooms, and that is very much a trend that we've seen in Alpine ISD as well. So, we have about 90 teachers total across our district, and in the last two years, 19 of them have been brand-new, non-certified, have a bachelor's degree but no training in teaching, love kids, want to be part of this amazing profession, right, but haven't gone through any specific training for that. And so, that is a huge challenge for districts to think about, how do we prepare them, literally the week before they're going to be working with kids, and then prepare them as they go throughout the year? And so, that's how the dynamic has changed, if you will, in terms of our teaching force. So, what do we do to address that? Two ideas. Short-term, like immediate, what have we as a district done? We have contracted with a number of retired teachers, highly-successful teachers, to come back and work intensively with those teachers, new teachers, in mentoring positions. That's been a really beneficial program. There's no funding for that, and so, we pull that from, again, the limited underfunding that we have. Bigger scale, I think that what we're seeing is a direct result of de-professionalizing the teacher profession. And so, the answer to me, as a whole, is how do we re-professionalize teaching, right? How do we quit intentionally denigrating the teaching profession in our public education schools? How do we put funding back into these roles to make it the profession that it once was and that it is in other well-resourced countries and places that have successful school systems?
Yes, Michelle, I mean, I think that that's obviously the number-one component here that has to be addressed, is you've got to get back, the state has to get back to a, creating a profession that's attractive, both financially and supportive through the administration and the state. We clearly are slipping in that department. As to how to address it, it has to be a multifaceted approach. And to your question, Brian, I think that it has to be done at the state level. This can't be a patchwork system of district by district. There's got to be leadership involved in how we address this. There have to be alternative certification programs. I think in a perfect world, we would have at least the majority of our educators come out of the university system, but we know that's not working. So, there have to be other approaches. And, you know, there are other options out there. I think that another facet of this that's interesting that we're seeing now is, the majority of the districts in the state have adopted some form of a district of innovation status, which gives districts flexibility in hiring certified educators versus non-certified. And I know a lot of those districts, in speaking with them, have put in programs where they try to incentivize those educators to go get certification after the fact, but there's little incentive to do that. And so, there needs to be more tools available to school districts to be able to bring, to fill seats, fill spots with non-certified educators, and then get them certified so they're better prepared. So, again, this is an area where I think we have diagnosed the problems correctly, but it's actually pursuing the answers and enacting some change and making the profession attractive again. That's where the political issues come in.
Can I add one thing? Because, you know, when you go first and you think about all the other things you wanted to say. You brought up something at the end of your question around equity and where these uncertified or new teachers are being placed, and the fact is that they are most often being placed on campuses that have higher percentages of students who are experiencing economic insecurity. And I think that there's two points there. One, that when I first heard about the teacher incentive allotment, I was living in Louisiana when it passed, I moved to Texas, and I said, excuse me, what? What is this thing you were able to get past? And what excited me most was not actually the strategic compensation, but the strategic staffing piece, which I know is harder to do in a small district, but in our larger districts, the compensation that's available for the teachers actually increases if those teachers are placed on campuses where they are most needed, which is both an incentive for the district to think about their staffing model, but also to teachers who can be offered, given an offer letter to say, we'll pay you this to work here, but we'll pay you this if you're interested in working here. And I have helped almost 100 school systems across Texas now implement the teacher incentive allotment, which is exciting, but we're not actually seeing that strategic staffing component be put into place as much as the strategic compensation. So, one thing I am hoping to see, if the teacher incentive allotment funding comes through, is that there is a lot of money in there to help school systems think, to get more technical assistance in putting those programs in place, which will then allow us to think about this second piece of TIA that we're not really seeing take up. And there's data around where students are being placed. I don't know how many people dig deep into texaschools.gov. I do more than probably your average person, but you can go look at every single campus in the state, and you can see the tenure of the current teachers who are teaching on that. And so, there is data out there. We can't show data without also then supporting on the other side, so I think it's both sides of the coin, but I didn't want to gloss over the fact that you have called out where those teachers are placed, and that's something that we need to address.
May I add to that through the lens of teacher incentive allotment? So, deeply involved in that work as well, it's a system we're looking to bring to Alpine ISD, and my last district helped lead their work with that system and wrote my dissertation on that, so spent a lot of time kind of deep in the weeds on that. But I think also it's a bit of a misnomer. In some ways, the teacher incentive allotment has been used as a, well, we don't really have to increase teacher pay because we can do it through this lens instead, right? Or if districts would just take on this system, then they could increase teacher pay. Well, first of all, that system is only set up for a third of teachers, right? Second of all, the amounts that teachers can receive from that, even at the highest level, in Alpine ISD, they can receive $24,000, which is incredible, designed for the top 5% of teachers, so maybe three or four teachers in Alpine would qualify for that based on proportionate scaling there. But also, the rhetoric around teacher incentive allotment is it's a pathway to a six-figure salary. Well, do the math, right? Highest salary in Alpine ISD, $55,000 plus 24 is not a six-figure salary. And so, there's still so much work to do to raise teacher salaries across the board while also bringing in and supporting these particular programs. One other piece I'll share from the teacher incentive allotment piece is that it has rural-specific components to it. If you teach in a rural district, you can receive higher allotment amounts than if you didn't, but in no way was that system designed with a rural district in mind, in that it's a very difficult system to apply for and enact. And as Bridget was saying, technical assistance is so appreciated because there's so many barriers to actually making that happen in our small rural districts. And so, I think we have a lot of work to do as a state in terms of thinking about some of these incentive systems and what they look like in the 50% of districts that are small rural.
And just before we move on to the next question, I will say, the teacher incentive allotment, teacher residency programs, there's funding, as you guys know, in HB1 tied to the education savings account. So, like we mentioned to start, there's stuff here that, you know, there are solutions being baked into these bills, but that piece is stuck in there from getting this across the finish line. And, you know, some districts are, I'm sure as you guys know, have, where they can have those residency programs, so that they're kind of in house, being able to produce teachers, like homegrown teachers, essentially. But moving into, you know, something that I feel like we, lawmakers really haven't talked a lot about is star scores, student assessment, in terms of, we saw them a couple months ago, what that looked like, math still kind of struggling to get back to the levels we had seen before the pre-pandemic. Could we kind of talk about what has been done? I know in 2021, there was tutoring HB4545, but since then, it seems like there were some modifications made to HB4545, but is that enough? What else would you like to see? Is there any proposals right now being in that big HB1 that you saw that maybe, oh, this could help us again get back on track? Or is it just more of the same of what happened in 2021?
I'll continue to go first, unless someone wants to.
Well, thankfully, as we were discussing earlier, Bridget, this is, getting into the accountability system is something that the Equity Center doesn't generally do. We focus on the finance side, getting schools the resources, but really, it's the perfect lens to look at all this through. You've got an accountability system that is getting more rigorous, as it's designed to every single year, while funding has remained stagnant at best. If you want to look at what inflation has done to funding, we're down about 14% from the buying power we had four years ago in 2019, so you've got two pieces of this equation moving in opposite directions. And there are numerous things in House Bill One that would help address this. From our perspective, the most important being substantially increasing the basic allotment, getting schools the resources they need to see to their local needs. Just doing that would cost, just getting us back to the buying power we had from four years ago would cost about $7 billion a year. It's a substantial move. There are other provisions in House Bill One that would address, help address this, give schools some additional tools. I believe both versions of the school finance bill address helping schools get students back in the classroom with programs like communities and schools. All of these are important. They're multi, it's a multifaceted problem, but primarily from our lens, it's that, first and foremost, you have to get schools the resources that they need in order to address this academic issue and getting student scores up.
I think when we're talking about student performance, there's three primary areas, and I've been told I talk and outline, so this is just the way my brain works. The first is building strong foundations in reading and math. Commit recently did an analysis where we looked at third graders across the state who were not scoring on grade level, and 9% of those students who were economically disadvantaged had caught up by sixth grade. It is ju- It is just a fact that students who are not on grade level by third grade struggle to catch up beyond third grade. So I love seeing the state and I love seeing districts dedicate. I was also a second grade teacher, so this is a little, little bias there. But I love seeing people dedicate resources and effort in those early grades, whether it is increasing access to pre-K. And there's a formula tweak that's in HB1 that increases funding to go to pre-K. I think the high-quality instructional material piece is critical because we have to have content-building, knowledge-focused curriculum in those early grades. Also, things like using the class tool, which structures early childhood classrooms so that the teachers are trained and focused on those high-quality interactions with our youngest learners. So foundational years prior to third grade, I think, is, is a huge place we need to continue to focus. The second is directly meeting student needs where they are. And this is hard. I am not saying this is easy. But I think about Dallas ISD, who looked at their population of students. They have almost 50% of their students are classified as emergent bilingual and said, we cannot have a add-on emergent bilingual or dual-language program. It has to actually be a component of our schools. And so now every elementary school in Dallas ISD is a dual-language campus, either one-way or two-way. And they have seen their emergent bilingual STAR proficiency raise 19 years, or excuse me, 19 years, 19 percentage points since they put that in place. And they now outperform the state when it comes to emergent bilingual. High-impact tutoring is another example of things that are hard and expensive. But research has shown that the number one thing you can do to help a student who is behind grade level get to grade level is that small three-to-four student to one teacher high-impact tutoring. It takes scheduling, it takes people, it takes doing things a little bit differently. But I think looking at that acceleration rate of 9%, we have to figure out how to do something differently or we are never going to get our students caught up. And then I think the third is continuing to monitor and assess performance. It has become a political bargaining chip, but it is also good policy. And it is critically important in a state the size of Texas. It allows us to highlight bright spots when things are going well. It allows us to continue to strive for continuous improvement and, in cases where it's absolutely necessary, allows for intervention.
So one thing I'd share on this, accountability is actually one of our six core values in Alpine ISD. So we are all about accountability throughout our system and then statewide. But when we talk about accountability in Alpine, we talk about two things. We talk about high expectations and high levels of support. So I'm going to have high expectations for every teacher within our district. But I'm also going to provide high levels of support to help them reach those expectations. And that's the exact same model that our teachers then replicate in their classrooms with their students and have high expectations for every single Alpine buck. And we're going to provide high levels of support to help them get there. So that's what we would like to see replicated at the state level, right? So we are not against high expectations. Again, we propagate those throughout our system. But they have to come with high levels of support. And right now, they do not from the state in many of our rural and remote districts. Give you an example of what this looks like. This is part of that, we can't separate accountability from the context in which it happens. So think about the numbers I shared earlier where 20 out of our 90 teachers are brand-new, teachers have had no specific training, their first time with the district is a week before they start in front of a classroom. Let's say at our elementary school, there's 30 teaching positions there and say about 12 of those are brand-new teachers. We have pre-K 3, pre-K 4, kindergarten through 4th grade. Which classrooms do you put those teachers in? There's no good answer to that and they're going to do a great job. They love kids, they're doing a great job this year for our kids. But they haven't been through the preparation that a seasoned, experienced, highly effective teacher has been through yet, right? I think of my first-year teaching and man, I love those kids. I worked really hard, but by my fifth year, I was ready to apologize to my first-year kids because I didn't know what I didn't know, right? And so that's, that's the choice that districts are being put in right now of, do we put our brand-new first-year teachers in 3rd and 4th grade STAR? Do we put them in K through 2, which we know is so foundational to build literacy? Do we put them in pre-K? And then how do we build in supports to help them become the highly effective teachers that they want to be? And so when you only talk about accountability and you're not actually looking at the context of, this is what it looks like on the ground in districts, you're missing that full picture. And again, for us, accountability is high expectations, but also high support. And I think we need a lot more of that from the state.
Real quick, I just want to try to bring this back full circle because everything that Bridgette and Michelle just said, in my opinion, is absolutely correct in how this needs to be addressed. But you can't do any of these things without the additional resources necessary to implement them. And so it all come, it all starts with what is the state willing to provide? Again, we know what we believe the answers are, but we have to have the resource, resources available to address it.
I can add to that for just one second to say, one of the ways that the state has done that is through federal ESAR funding, right? Which is now going away. And so many districts, Alpine included, have had to start scaling back because we know that funding is disappearing. And so just last year, we had to consolidate intervention positions that were designed to help kids get to reading level by 3rd grade and to address the gaps from the pandemic because that was never permanent funding and we're back to our, our underfunded levels before.
Just before we go really into finance, just want to, you know, one of the news around accountability right now is, you know, school districts across the state sued the TEA over the new accountability kind of threshold for, for career and college readiness scores. Those are now, you know, there'll be a trial for that. Those can't be released by that temporary order. Accountability has been a big talk about, you know, in, in the legislature and all the past year in these bills specifically, you know, in Governor Abbott's kind of, you know, deal yesterday. You know, one of the highlights of his deal is, you know, getting rid of, getting rid of the STAR and figuring out what to do with that. And I know last session, there was also a bill in the House, you know, that got rid of STAR and replaced it with something else. And even now, I know there's school districts that are doing pilot programs with, with kind of STARS and, you know, three times a year or something like that. Can you guys, you know, I know this is a big topic, but as quickly as you can, you know, talk about, you know, what's working right now with the accountability system? And what would you like to see that would, you know, bring positive kind of change forward? I know everybody has different opinions of what good accountability looks like in public schools. But, you know, what, how can you move forward?
So Commit is unapologetically supportive of a comparable, fair accountability system and a summative assessment because it is. So I was listening to a podcast the other day that was focused on early foundational years. And the woman acknowledged something called the honesty gap, which is not something that occurs in every school. But in Texas right now, there is no requirement that parents know that their student is not performing on grade level until they take the STAR test in 3rd grade. And I shared the statistic about the likelihood of catching up if you're not on. And so that itself is a problem. But I think about then what that means if we didn't have a summative assessment in 3rd grade to 12th grade. I think it provides really important information to parents. And I also think the accountability system provides really important information to parents. A lot of the changes that were coming up in the refresh were exciting to me. One of them being that there would be bonus points for students who were below grade level and the district was able to have them meet grade level. Not only were there going to be points in the accountability system, that was now actually going to be an additional data point that we could see on texaschools.gov. And that, to me, is such a, such a strong piece of what you're looking for when you're looking for a, a school that is truly thinking about what every student needs and serving them. The only other thing I will say about accountability, because I come at it from a lens of outside of Texas too. It is very unique that Texas's accountability system is the better of growth or performance. That is not the norm in accountability systems across the state. It is usually primarily performance and then there are additional points that are available. Growth is a component. The fact that Texas does allow the better of, I think, is, is part of what makes it complex for sure. But when you're looking at a state that is serving this many students and is this large, it has to have these different complexities in order to address the, the many different campuses, the campus models and students that are across the state.
Yeah, I'll start with one of the things that you shared, which is the governor signaling, we'll get rid of STAR. Like, hey, maybe if, if we get rid of STAR, will you let us have vouchers? Like that kind of play? I think what's important to remember here is that that doesn't get, move us away from the federal requirement that we have a state assessment system, right? And so what, what the governor's talking about here is we will no longer call it STAR. We'll redesign it and give it another name with T in it somewhere, right? And, but there will still be this system. And so I think, you know, for people to be cautious about this as a red herring in terms of what it actually, it actually means. Again, going back to our core values, we are all about accountability. However, when you look at the current accountability system, really what they're using is just students' performance on one given day, particularly at the elementary and middle school levels. And so there are post-secondary readiness components of our accountability system. But when you peel back those, even at the elementary and middle school level, it is solely based on kids' STAR performance, again, one test, one day. Is that the only way that we want to measure accountability? In rural communities, our schools are so much more than those one STAR tests. And so how do we, you know, measure what actually matters to our community? What does matter to communities? I think there's been a lot of work around alternative accountability systems and designing those in Texas and being able to work with communities about what does matter here? What about belonging, extracurricular participation, success in other areas that aren't just this one test? How do we build that fuller system to have that public accountability, particularly when we're talking about public dollars? One last thing that I'd be remiss to not, to not include is that I believe that this entire conversation applies anytime that we use public funds. And so if we're going to use public funds for vouchers for private education, then they should be subject to the same public transparency and accountability that public schools are.
Yeah, you know, we've had these conversations with superintendents and school board members for decades. I've never had a superintendent tell me that they wanted to eliminate the accountability system. Accountability is a good thing. It's how you get there, I think, is where the questions lie. That's where the details are. Primarily just full transparency and having conversations with superintendents across the state. You know, I believe that's one of the core components of the accountability system that they've got issues with is going into the school, you're knowing exactly where the bars are. What, what, what do we need to meet this year in order to be acceptable to be an A-rated district, an A-rated campus? I think it needs to be simplified. And I think that there needs to be more flexibility and recognition of multi, you know, multifaceted, recognition of, okay, was it a, is it student growth? Or is it, you know, meeting a very strict cut score? Having that flexibility is good, but I think giving school districts a little bit more flexibility in order to demonstrate academic success would improve buy-in from the education community on the issue of accountability.
Yeah, I'd one more thing to this too, just to kind of give an example of what this looked like as it was all unfolding, you know, with these changing metrics. So in September, at the same time this lawsuit was going on, TEA was looking at the data to see how did the way that we changed cut points, how did that actually impact schools? And particularly for the growth metric, one of the things that they saw was using the old cut points. Last year, I think it was something like 9%, it was single digits. 9% of elementary schools scored either a D or an F. Then when they changed to the new cut scores, that percentage was going to balloon to 59%. 59% of elementary scores would earn either a D or F in this growth measure because of that change in cut scores, even though many of those school districts actually increased performance. Make that make sense, right? And so districts were saying, how can that be? Is this just a very wild coincidence that this is happening at the same time as a very public, anti-public ed campaign, right? In order to push through vouchers? And so back to Josh's point, set the standards in advance, clearly communicate them and don't use our accountability system for political purposes.
Right before we go to questions, you know, one of the things that kind of comes around with all these, you know, solutions and challenges is, you know, the money side, the financials, right? We need money to do X, Y, and Z. Can you guys, I know Josh and Michelle, you guys probably had, you know, a lot of conversations, but what does a magic number look like? You know, in the legislature, you know, lawmakers will say, you know, you keep telling us to give you some, give us, you know, the exact number, like what will get you to that? Is it as simple as, you know, by the end of this special session, you'll get X in the basic allotment and you'll be, you'll be golden? Or is it one of those things where, you know, you know, there hasn't been an increase since 2019 in the basic allotment? Is it one of those things that each, you know, let's, we got to revisit these numbers and keep increasing? What, what, what is that formula look like?
This, absolutely, go ahead.
So I'll just start by saying, I think issue number one is getting every single district in Texas to their current allotment. Again, that is not happening. The most recent data from the Equity Center shows that 76% of districts across Texas aren't receiving what they're supposed to receive on paper. That's fix number one. Is that expensive? You bet, $750 million. But we, if we do not have the money to do that during a year that we have a record surplus, right? If this is not the year to fix that, then when is? And also, if this is not the year to fix that, then we sure don't have $500 million to be putting into vouchers, right? So first thing for me is fully fund every district to their current allotment. Everyone receives every dollar that they're supposed to on paper. That only brings us to the level that we should have been receiving from 2019. And that leans into the, the need to adjust for inflation so that we can, that our buying power doesn't decrease year over year as it has for the last four years.
I'm glad you started off with that, Michelle, because that's exactly right. Just addressing the, what the current law says school districts should be receiving that they are not receiving. That is priority one. And it's, it's, look, this is a great question and this comes up often. You know, okay, school districts, you're coming asking the legislature for additional revenue. You know, how much is enough? We look at it from this perspective. Let's start very simply. The legislature did a lot of good work back in 2017 and 2018 through the Texas Commission on Public School Finance, studying what needed to be funded and how. And they got us somewhere in the vicinity of, you know, of what could be considered adequate. Just to get us back again, that I'm, like I mentioned at the beginning of the panel, just to get us back to the buying power school districts had in 2019, it would cause the basic allotment, it would require the basic allotment to go up about $1,000. That cost about $7, $7.5 billion per year. So let's start there. That's $14, $15 billion for the biennium. Second component, the legislature, the Select Committee on Special Education Funding, found that the state is underfunding special education services to the tune of about $2 billion a year. And this, they came to that conclusion by looking at what are school districts spending on special education services versus what is being funded by the state? $2 billion delta there. So that's $4 billion of biennium. So now we're up to about $19 billion. Move over to school safety. We know that the legislature through House Bill 3 is requiring school districts essentially to have a school resource officer, a law enforcement officer of some kind on every campus. We did research on this. We know this costs roughly $100,000 per campus once you consider the salary of the officer, benefits, training and equipment. That's about $1 billion a year to fully fund that mandate. Now we're at $20 to $21 billion just to get us funding the things the state is telling school districts they need to do. Then you add in the $1.5, $1.6 billion to get us to full formula funding in current law. You're somewhere around $23 billion, I think, is the answer to that question of what is adequate? What is enough? That's the starting point.
I'm not going to give you a dollar, Mel. These folks, I think, have done the calculations a lot more. For, for me, it's not how much money, it's for what purpose. And I continue to be excited when I see the legislature identify research-backed students-first strategies that they are willing to fund and, and hope to see that continue.
Lastly, this is more explanation for maybe, you know, folks that are watching that maybe, you know, you keep saying we aren't even funded what they're supposed to. Can you kind of talk about that? I know Josh and Michelle, you've guys have, you know, really dug into this issue about, you know, the, kind of that dispute between the, the state and the, the local appraisal districts. Can you kind of clear up on, on why that is and why that's happening?
Sure, I can start with the local level. So it will surprise many Texans that districts don't receive everything they're supposed to on paper, right? So in Alpine ISD, we don't receive 15%, which is $1.5 million on a $10 million budget that we're supposed to receive every single year in order to provide those research-based student strategies, right? To help students succeed. And so why is that? How is that happening? So there's actually a number of different nuanced things that lead to that. Two big ones in Alpine ISD. One is disputes between local county appraisal districts about what our properties should be valued at and the state comptroller about what the state thinks they should be valued at. And because of those disputes, the state ends up withholding funding from school districts. And because of those disputes, the state ends up withholding funding from school districts, even though we have nothing to do with our local CADs. We are completely separate entities. We have nothing to do with how values are determined, but they punish school districts by withholding money from the school district as a way to try to put local pressure on the county appraisal districts to increase property values. So our big stance on that is leave us out of it. We have nothing to do with the CAD. Quit punishing Texas schoolchildren by withholding money from schools for something completely separate from us. So we lose $1 million every year to that issue. Second issue for us is in the property tax relief bill that was passed this summer, they included a provision that mandated that districts that have a local option homestead exemption have to continue that for five years. And that has, we have, we're blessed to have had a local option homestead exemption. That's basically an additional homestead percentage that the district gives to its homeowners. We do 10%. We've done that when the state wasn't doing property tax relief. But that now costs us about $600,000 a year and we were looking to rescind that since the state finally stepped in to give property tax relief to our property owners. Now it is mandated that we continue to provide that for the next five years and the state does not make up that lost funding. And so in those two issues alone are a $1.6 million loss off the top in our district every year. And I can't fix those. Only our legislative leaders can fix those. And it's not just Alpine, it's 150 districts across the state that struggle with these issues.
Yeah, this is an issue that gets really down into the school finance weeds and so I won't go there, but I'll just say that, you know, the crux of the issue really is very simple. The legislature has set up a system of formula funding to determine what school districts are entitled to in order to properly educate their students. And then for the vast majority of school districts, they don't, the, the, the funding delivery system is deficient and it doesn't actually deliver what the state says the school districts are entitled to based on their district characteristics and student characteristics. And so it's, it's, you know, this is an issue where you address it and you're not increasing funding for schools. You're just delivering what state law says those districts are entitled to in order to properly educate their students. And it's multifaceted. It has to do with the comptroller issue and property values. It has to do with whether a district has adopted a local option homestead exemption or just simply whether a district doesn't collect 100% of their property taxes in a given year because a large property taxpayer protests. There are a number of issues that cause this to be a problem, but just the issue in short is the state has said districts are entitled to a certain amount to properly educate their students. And then on the other hand, they're not delivering that amount. There is a simple fix to this problem and we do it for about 150 districts. There are a subset of districts that have a provision in state law that says that, for whatever reason, if you don't collect 100% of your local revenue in order to fulfill your entitlement, then we're going to make you whole. For the other 840, 850 districts, they're not given that guarantee. And so the solution is there, it's just a question of political will.
So as we enter into our Q and A period, want to remind folks joining us online that you can ask your question at texastribune.org/ask. Question to start out that Michelle may, may be best to answer, but for all of you. You've talked today about issues that policy needs to address, but one of the less tangible aspects of the state of public education in Texas is teacher morale and the public's trust in, in public education. We're talking about solutions to some of the biggest challenges today and wanting to assure a strong future for public education. How do we address these challenges?
I can start on that one. Recently I was interviewing for a podcast and we were talking about, you know, what is, what's the potential danger of vouchers, particularly in rural communities where there may or may not be private schools? And I said, aside from what many people have talked about, about how that will impact funding, the way that vouchers have been pushed forward, specifically with an intentional statewide anti-public education slant, has been incredibly damaging for our public schools and especially through this lens of teacher morale, right? To have our state leaders malign our teachers who do incredible work day in and day out in the hardest profession, as Bridgette shared earlier, in the world, right? That has an impact both on teacher and staff morale, but also on community-school relations where some of our state leaders have been trying to deliberately seed distrust between schools and communities. So how do we address that, right? I think at the state leadership level, we need our leaders to lead on behalf of public education. We need them to champion public education. At the local level, you know, what we've done in Alpine is tell our story. There are amazing things that happen every single day on every one of our campuses in Alpine ISD. And part of our local strategy has been sharing those joys and successes with our community so they see the great things and don't kind of fall victim to this negative rhetoric about things that aren't happening in public schools.
Yeah, I mean, Michelle, just, that was exactly the issue. I mean, this is, you know, an issue of, of politics being injected into the educational system. And whether it is, you know, this absurd notion that children are being indoctrinated in public schools or whether there are problems with books and libraries, it appears at least that there has been a consistent and coordinated attack on the image, the, the public's image of what their, the public school system is. And I think that when you look at it, when, when the general public sees it from a global perspective, it starts to make a difference. Now, when you ask them about their community schools, their own public schools, they know they support them. They know the quality work that goes on in those schools. But just from a global perspective, this constant assault on the profession and the public education system as a whole, obviously has a, you know, an issue on morale. It, I think it's designed to.
I think we continue focusing at a systems level and helping provide both supports or interventions when they're needed to systems because that ultimately trickles down to the teachers. How do we help get the best curriculum resources into the teacher's hands? How do we compensate the highest performing teachers? How do we create a teacher prep that is professional and equivalent to doctors and other, other professions that hold the future in their hands like teachers do? We should not be attacking teachers. It is not, teachers are not where our focus needs to be. It is, it is on the systems, holding them accountable, supporting them so that they can do what they need to do to support their teachers.
Thank you all for speaking. I was just entering the teaching profession a few years ago and I'm taking a break from that because it's a rough time to be a teacher. The scope of practice has grown considerably, to which point I saw a huge value in, you know, family, community involvement in education and the sort of wraparound services that community schools can provide. The state of Texas has community, communities and schools, which one of you mentioned. Could you just speak more on the opportunities for that community school model and the priority that it should be given amid all of the other things to fund? For comparison, California's Governor Newsom recently touted that they're going to have $4 billion to make a third of their schools community schools. Texas, I think they're raising, if House Bill 1 passes, it's going to raise the cap to like 50 million that they might spend. So there's just a huge difference in priority there.
Can I start first? So just to clarify and question, community schools, meaning like schools that provide wraparound services and act as the, as the center of their community?
Yes.
Okay. And so in many ways, our rural schools are exactly that. And I'll give you examples from Alpine ISD. So within Alpine, our schools provide services and connections to counseling services, both with our in-house counselors, but also with community LPCs at the district then funds. We also just launched a daycare center for our community since we had, we were actually identified as a daycare desert with over 200 children under the age of three and I think 12 childcare spots with throughout town. And so in many ways, our rural districts are informally already operating as that community model. Now, there's no specific state funding for that outside of the underfunded system we've already discussed, but I think this really illuminates the way that rural districts operate as the center of their community. And that's why so many rural communities across the state are concerned about, A, the push for vouchers and B, the pushing of school funding to the back burner while we wait on this voucher fight, which is sucking up all the oxygen because our rural schools are the centers of our communities. And if we don't fully fund them, what does that future look like for those rural communities, which we are, we know are already some of the most underserved and underserviced communities across Texas?
Yeah, this is a great question and it goes back to something that I mentioned at the beginning, which was that, you know, school districts are being asked to do more and more with essentially less. And, you know, just, just go back not too long ago to pre-K being established as a, you know, essentially a requirement for school districts. And when it was, it was not fully funded. It was very partially funded. And to the legislature's credit, they have recognized this in the proposal in House Bill 1 to create a weight to fund pre-K services. And so whether it be branching out into the community and bringing in more, a bigger support system, which I think we acknowledge we all need, or whether it be just actually funding what schools are required to do right now, which are above and beyond your core expectations of what schools did 20 years ago, you know, it, it's both of those things. They have to work in conjunction with one another. And so it's, it's a, it's a great point and I think that that's how we start to build more buy-in and more support for the public education system and everything that they do on a daily basis.
I think we all agree the school system plays an incredible role in the community. I don't know as much about the community schools program, though if it is a program that is research-backed and student-driven, then it's something I'd love to know more about. I think the, the two points that have come up that I'd love to just drive home is, one, this communication to parents. I would love, I would love to see the honesty gap eliminated and I would love to see a world in which parents are not bearing the burden of having to ask how their student's doing. In all cases, the school is communicating openly with the parents and honestly with the parents about where their students are and the additional supports that they can work on together. We have also seen some pretty incredible opportunities in Dallas where the community and school systems have come together to give parents a one-stop shop of mixed benefits, the benefits that are available, instead of asking parents to think about food here and childcare here and school here, giving that centralized location. So things that, that back that, that encourage more of that in a community sound like things we should be looking into.
Let me try to ask this quickly because I know we're almost out of time, directly, directed mostly to the superintendent. One means of accountability or measuring is what are your employers think? Because they're the ones ultimately hiring your graduates or the colleges in your area? Are those folks, are those kids ready for college? What do your employers tell you? Are they supporters of you? Have they abandoned the schools or the public schools? And what are they telling your elected officials to help give that kind of feedback that might influence their policymaking?
Love that, thank you. So, great question. And this is an area that we've done a lot of work over the last few years in terms of building community-wide partnerships, specifically with our businesses. I'll give you one example. We're blessed to have a hospital in our rural community. That's not, that is not true and increasingly less true across rural Texas, but blessed to have a hospital. And we partner with them on, right now it's a CNA program where our high school students can earn a CNA before they graduate. But in many ways, that program within our rural school district is an introduction to all the healthcare careers. And so we're building those strong pipelines to not just grow our own teachers, as we talked about earlier, but also grow our own rural healthcare professionals. We're in conversations with universities and also with philanthropies as well about how do we build, bring rural healthcare training to our area, which is two and a half hours away from the nearest city center and the nearest, currently the nearest opportunity to get post-secondary training in healthcare fields outside of nursing. We're blessed to have a local university in our community as well, but we, the nearest community college is two and a half hours away. And so there's a lot of work we're doing, I know I'm kind of diving deep into healthcare here, but around how do we bring more resources to our under-resourced rural area? And what I want people to think about is if the school is not serving as the backbone to help coordinate that, then who is, right? And in so many ways, this is a great example of our schools serving as the center of our communities, both in terms of pre-K 12 education, but also in terms of post-secondary education and also in terms of workforce development. And I think that's part of what we miss, particularly in rural communities, if we haven't had experience there, to see the central role that they play.
Well, thank you guys for joining us. I think that wraps up the panel and thank you guys for being here and sharing your thoughts and expertise.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Brad.